We want to welcome you today to Weaver County Commission Meeting. It's good to have you all here. It's 10 o'clock on January the 15th. The month, first month of the year is half over. And it goes quick, doesn't it? Hard to believe. Anyways, it's good to have you all here today. We want to welcome you. We will start this meeting today with a invocation by Ricky Hatch. And Joe Hadley is going to give us our pledge, do our pledge of allegiance. So we will go to that point. Ricky?
Let's pray. Kind heavenly Father, we thank thee this morning for the beautiful day before us. We thank thee for thy mercy and for thy hand in establishing this country and for inspiring leaders to help establish sound principles that help preserve the freedoms that thou hast given us. We ask that thy spirit be with us today. All those who will participate, that they may do so with wisdom and in a manner pleasing to thee. We're grateful for the individuals who serve in this county, who serve in the various capacities, those who provide employment and those who work in the county and those who volunteer to help serve citizens and residents here. And we ask that thy hand will, thy eyes will watch over them and thy hand will hold them up. And we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch and Mr. Hadley. So I'm over the thought of the day today. And I just want everybody to know that I'm grateful for the opportunity I have of being a county commissioner and serving on this county. It's something that is truly a blessing in my life and hopefully it'll be a blessing in other people's lives as time goes on. I was given the thought today, a man's dreams are an index to his greatness. So you know, you need to be careful what you dream of and what you think of because if you put some time and effort into it, you generally end up accomplishing it. And I think that's really important. You know, I look back at my life and things that I've done and places I've been able to go and I look at Roger Larson down there. Well, Roger's a year older than me. And he went to Weber High School just like I did. And I just had my 50th class reunion this year. And I, I'm getting pretty old. But I never had a, never intended to go into politics. Was never a thought of mine. I always had other ambitions in life. And as, as time has gone on, it's been interesting to see how things, opportunities come by and you choose to take them and you find yourself in different places all the time. And that's exactly what's happened to me in my life. I, I took an opportunity and got on a planning commission. And then it was an opportunity after that that I decided to run for a, a city councilman. And then I decided to take the opportunity because a vacant spot came by to be the mayor. And it's just amazing how it happens. And you put yourself in these situations and sometimes they're blessings and sometimes they're curses. Curses. Anyway, for me, they've been blessings. I've enjoyed them. So anyway, with that, we'll continue on. We moved the public comment portion of this meeting up to the front in case people had non-agenda items that they wanted to come and comment on. And so the time is there. If you would like to take a little time, any of you today that have come to address us as commissioners, please feel free to step forward to the lectern, do we call it?
Okay.
You want it?
I'm you.
Okay, lectern. All right. Anybody wish to address us today? All right, don't see any, so we'll go ahead and go on. And then you can address us as we go through our, our meeting today. First presentation today is by Ricky Hatch. Certification of completion of NACO. Ricky?
Okay, and I'll invite April Hatfield to come up to the front as well, so we can brag about her a little bit. April works at our front counter. Our front counter handles a tremendous workload. Over 5,000 passports a year, passport applications come through our, our front counter, almost 3,000 marriage licenses. And that's, and that's not even getting into the tax relief and applications that come through. There are probably three or 3,000 or more of those as well. So they do a tremendous amount of work and handle all sorts of interesting arrangements and situations that come, come through that door. And they do it with a smile. That's the nice thing. April has been with us about two years now, right?
Three with the part-time.
Okay, yeah, that's right. She was part-time for a while and then has come on full-time and has taken up some leadership positions, some leadership position at the front counter. And so we offered to her and she accepted to take, to attend a, the Leadership Academy provided through the National Association of Counties in conjunction with the Professional Development Academy. And the name of the course is the NACO or National Association of Counties High Performance Leadership Academy. It's an intensive leadership program that had instructors such as Colin Powell and, and others. It was a mixture of online courses, conference calls, and assignments that they had to follow up on. There were four areas of leadership capabilities that were measured by the program. Leadership mindset and positive engagement, leading effective change, communication and collaboration, and leading high-performance teams. We, April kept Lynn, her supervisor, and me informed of her progress throughout the multi-month class. And in the end, they sent us a report card, her grade, and she earned a final score of 97 percent. And so I'm pleased to present to her her certificate of completion of the, from the Professional Development Academy for Excellence in Leadership. And along with that comes a very nice-looking challenge coin that comes with that. And then also they provide a book written by Colin Powell. And on the inside is a signature of Colin Powell. So you get an autographed book from him. And just wanted to congratulate her for completing that course. I'll get that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I was just very honored that they chose to let me do this. I've, I've never had a leadership course before, even though I've been in leadership roles. And it really gave me a direction and something substantial to go by for, for any future endeavors. And it was very appreciated from everybody here to let me do that.
That's great. Thank you very much and congratulations. We absolutely wish you well as you move along. And this is wonderful. We love it when we can educate people and make them better at their jobs and better in their lives. And so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. That's a start to a great day. April, siding for that. All right. Next up on our agenda are consent items. Requests for approval of warrants 1665 through 1667 and 435567 through 435758 in the amount Request, a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $1,159,836.99. Requests for the approval of the minutes from January 7th. Requests for approval of bear licenses that have been listed. Requests for approval of cooperative agreement between Weber County and Utah State University to promote and provide cooperative extension services. Ricky, would you like to take the first part of that?
Absolutely.
Make us a report.
We issued 63 purchase orders this week for $1.6 million. Three-fourths of that amount, or $891,000, is for the library. And that is an open purchase order that will be used throughout the year to purchase books and periodicals, as well as audiovisual materials. 6% or $73,000 is for the ice sheet. And that went to several things, but primarily concessions, supplies, and some maintenance. As far as checks, we issued 195 checks this week for $805,000. There's a whole host of kind of mid-sized purchases in there. 18% or $142,000 is for the jail. That's mostly for culinary, but it also covers utilities, hospital fees, and some training. 10% or $79,000 is for corridor preservation in Harrisville and Plain City. That includes, that includes a $36,000 expense that went to Tamgram Consulting. Those are consulting services for wayfinding, master plan, and design.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Ricky.
You bet. 8% or $64,000 is for IT, and that was for PC upgrades. 7% or $56,000 is for the library. That was primarily software maintenance, utilities, and building maintenance. And then we had four items at 6% who were right around $50,000. Health administration, and that was primarily the premium, that was the premium paid to USIP, their annual premium. Weber Housing Authority, $50,000. That was a contribution to the YCC. The sheriff had $47,000. And that was several areas, computers, medical training and medical services, and then training bulletins. And then lastly, Homeland Security, $48,000 for the purchase of a 3D scanner. That's from Pharaoh. And that 3D scanner can be used to take in a 3D image of a crime scene or an accident scene and be able to preserve that for further analysis and provides benefits from that. It comes with a laptop computer. The cost was about $4,000 for that computer, which allows it to be controlled remotely if needed and provides other analysis benefits. That's, that's there. And the sheriff's office can provide more details if needed on that.
Thank you. So I called these fellers and we talked about the library purchase, books and materials. Libraries made two large purchases there. One for $557,000 and the audiovisual material for 107. So Linda chooses to place these purchase orders in one block at the first of the year. And the advantage is we get a little discount by doing that. And second, it locks everything into place. But we don't pay that amount on that day. We pay it as she draws it down. So it's a little bit of an unusual way of doing it. But it's, it's within, it's reasonable and it's within our, our, within her right purchasing to do that. Checked with Jason on that and he said, that's just fine the way she's got it. So we determined that was okay. All right, any other questions on these purchases? Okay, the, yes. I'm sorry, Gage, pardon me.
Thank you. Just a question for Ricky. I just would like a little more information on that corridor preservation. Was that a particular section of property protecting a trail or what, what exactly was the corridor preservation?
All right. Well, first off, I misspoke. That did not include the tangram. That was actually a separate purchase. So the corridor preservation was for two areas, and that was in Harrisville. Most of the purchase amount went to Harrisville and I want to say 350 East, but I, you can't quote me on that exact location, but it's in Harrisville. But there was also some purchases out in Plain City.
And I'm assuming those were for county roads? Expansion of county roads? Is that?
My understanding is that is purchase for not necessarily county. That's reimbursement to the cities.
Through the WACOG.
Yeah, through the WACOG and the transportation.
Transportation. Is that correct, John?
Okay. All right.
Right, so that's a WACOG transportation, which you'll see lots of.
Yeah, that's a transportation issue then.
Correct.
For the county. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Very good. So at the bottom of that list, you know, there's a cooperative agreement between Weber County and Utah State University. So we had a discussion about that today. And if you say, remember I said I thought it was about 274? Well, it was 275,477. So I don't know what you do. You know, we've been doing this for years. That's a ton of money. And that's just the beginning. We, we give them the building to operate out of. We, of course, we did give them some staff, but as is said in our meetings this morning, that staff's no longer there. But we support Utah State. But of course, it's not for free. I mean, they, they give us a lot in return, you know? They go, they go out and, yeah. And they go out and deal with farmers out here, talk about their cattle and their, their horses. We've got a large population of horse training around here and they'll work with those folks.
Ovine cattleman?
Yeah, they do a lot of it. So that's what we pay for. Anyway, so it's on here to be approved.
That's, that's an annual amount, correct?
Yeah, that's an, right. All right. Is there any questions for the commission about this? I'm looking for a motion.
Entertain a motion to improve consent items as listed 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 on the agenda, Mr. Chair.
So you're making that motion? Okay, there's a motion from, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Item G, consent items has been approved. Action items, request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing a trustee to the board of the Weber Taylor Cemetery District. Stacy, go ahead.
Good morning. A midterm vacancy was created due to the resignation of Larry Blanch on the West Weber Taylor Cemetery District Board of Trustees. So I posted the vacancy as per state statute. And you have received two applications for the one position. And it would just be to fulfill the remainder of Larry Blanch's term to expire December 31st of 2019.
Thanks, Stacy. Any questions on this? Neither of you?
No, my understanding is we've just received the two. Is that correct?
Two applications, yeah. There's one position.
And that opening are now closed publicly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
So we're looking for a motion.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, our challenge is, is we have two individuals who both by application and by credentials are fine men who are willing to serve and help the county. We have a decision to make with regards to who would be the better candidate to serve on our, on this, the West Weber Cemetery District. And so knowing both of them, knowing both of them, sorry, you're calling for a motion.
So you know, I, I don't know Mr. Opikens, but I know Roger Heslop very well. And I've known him for years and years. And if you read his resume, it's a tremendous resume. He's been around and so I hardly support him. But that is in no way to talk down or negative to Mr. Opikens because he's a great guy too. And I just happen to know Roger Heslop. And so I didn't do any more after that because I could easily support Roger. But like I say, I read through Mr. Opikens and his is a good resume. There's nothing wrong with him either.
And I'm not, I'm not familiar with either gentleman, so.
Well, on these kind of deals, when there's a close one, we really need to call and talk to these individuals to see if you can formulate an opinion. But like I say, in my case, I had no reservation here at all about Roger because I've known him for so long.
Mr. Chair, I admittedly come today without having actually talked to both applicants recently. I'd like to, so I'm not prepared to make that motion today. What I would like to do is table this for another week until I have a chance to do that. So before I make the motion or consider a second, I would like to be more prepared with this.
Okay. Is that a motion or is that just statement?
I would like to, I would move to table this for a week.
Okay, there's motion, table this. Gage?
Yeah, I'm going to second that and speak to it if I might. I think that's probably a wise idea. I would also like to have a discussion. I know Terry Hancock has some feelings and I'd like to have his input since he will be working directly with this individual. As well as the opportunity to maybe sit down with both these individuals at some time. So unless this is a necessity that this be done this week, I would again support that motion.
Okay. Well, to that motion, I agree. I see where Terry was listed as a, as a reference on his resume, Mr. Opikens' resume. It was, I'm trying to think who else was on there. I knew him too. Knew both of them that was on there. Oh yeah, Joan Beasley. Yeah, so I know both, both of them. And I know Brian. I don't know him near as well as I do Roger, but I know who he is. So anyway, okay, there's a motion, a second to hold this off for a week. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. Very good. Request for a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Resolution Number 2 of Weber County, appointing Gage Fror of the County Commission to the Weber Morgan Board of Health. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. The interlocal agreement that governs the Weber Morgan Health Department sets out a 13-member board. One of those members is a Weber County Commissioner. There is a vacancy now on that board with Commissioner James Ebert concluding his term. And so that, we're bringing this before you to fill that vacancy.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments to that?
No, I, because of the Board of Health and their resolution, I, I want to publicly say that they have been absolutely fantastic to work with, especially this past year. I love the fact that we now have involvement with the Midtown Clinic and the hospitals, the schools. It's been a good balance. And I think because of Gage's active role in the community in the past, that he would be a good candidate. So I would, if you'd entertain a motion, Mr. Chair.
I am, I'm waiting for it.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Mr. Gage Fror to the Weber County Board of Health or the Weber Morgan Health Department.
Thank you. And I'll second that, so there's no conflict.
No conflict, right.
You bet. Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution, Commissioners?
Resolution 2.
Resolution 2. Is it 2?
It's 1.
1.
Okay, it was changed. Resolution 1.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good. Item 3, a resolution between Weber County and the Weber Housing Authority is going to be held. So we'll go to item 4. Request for approval of a contract between Weber County and the Utah Department of Transportation for snow removal. Joe Hadley.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet, Joe Hadley.
This is a cooperative agreement between Weber County and UDOT in case we have an emergency and our snow blower breaks down and they have to come do work for us. Last year, we didn't even use them. We're hoping this year we don't, don't as well. It's just, it just outlines what they're going to charge us if they need to come up and, and help us out.
Okay, so like you say, it's just an in case.
Yes, yep.
Very good.
Excuse me, Mr. Hadley.
Yes.
May I?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Have you used our snow blower in the last two weeks?
Yes.
Can you tell us how?
How we have used it? Up, up to Powder Mountain, drifting.
And?
Oh, yes. We, I apologize. We had an incident on the North Ogden Divide last Sunday, well, two Sundays. And we had to pull the snow blower off of Powder Mountain and go blow the avalanches off the North Ogden Divide.
Could you explain to us why it took you two days to do, to do that?
If you watch Fox 13, I was on there, I'm famous now. So we counseled the Utah State Avalanche Control Center. They recommended that we wait 24 to 48 hours after the avalanches happened to let the snow stabilize so it was safe for our crews to go up there. So all in all, it was a safety matter. That's why we waited to go up.
I thought that was pretty smart. Fellas to get some recommendations and protect life and limb. So we appreciate that, Joe. You did a really good job there. We've heard nothing but compliments about what you did and how you helped those folks out and everything, so.
Thank you.
You bet. This is very, very good. Very good. So I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Fror.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Harvey. You get, you used to talk to each other a little informally and you don't want to do that on this day. You want to be formal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passage unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Hadley, Joe, we appreciate it. Request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Broken Heart Rodeo for Intermountain Icebreaker Rodeo. Duncan?
Good morning, Commissioners.
You bet.
As you said, this is our contract with the stock contractor, Broken Heart Rodeo. This rodeo, we started it eight, nine years ago, and it has grown into kind of the kickoff for the high school rodeo season. We've added a few components this year. We've added a junior high component. Junior high rodeo is really taking off right now. And so we've added that. And the, the qualif, it has turned into a qualifier for the junior NFR. And so this, this rodeo that Commissioner Harvey and Amy King started several years ago is really just taking off and it's turned into something that is, is, is really an awesome event. And honestly, we can't do it without the stock contractor. He does a great job providing quality stock and running the show. So that's what this contract is.
Good questions from, yeah.
Commissioner Fror? So this is junior high and high school?
Correct.
Not pro?
Correct.
And where's the Broken Heart Rodeo Company from? They local?
I believe they're located in West Haven.
West, oh, okay.
Yeah.
And you've used them before?
Yeah. They're the, they're the same stock contractor that, that provides the stock for the Rocky Mountain Pro Rodeo. But they are the, the local stock contractor.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
I, I want to just, Commissioners, if I may.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harvey?
Go ahead.
You know, Amy really has done a fantastic job. This is a Weber County-produced rodeo. This rodeo was started, just as there's preseason football and preseason soccer and preseason baseball, there was no preseason rodeo. And now there is one. The ironic thing about this, it's Weber County-produced, so it can't go anywhere else. A board can't come in and say, you know, this community's given more money or this community's done this, that, or the other to take the rodeo away from us. So it stays here. It's in, it helps contribute to our local tourism. But it's grown to be the largest rodeo in the state. It's larger than the state high school finals.
Amazing.
It is amazing. And so this is a homegrown, home-cultivated event that is now the largest of its kind in the state of Utah and is known just, not just around the 12 to 14 states in our region, but also gets into a couple of provinces in Canada. They'll come down. With this junior high component, it'll even be busier. One of the things that's not listed that Mr. Olson and crew do is it takes a tremendous amount of labor and work to flip the stalls. When you have that many contestants, that many stalls, and then you have another event the weekend following to be able to have the amount of material for shavings and to be able to strip those stalls. They also use another group locally to help with the labor because even with our fantastic relationship we have with the inmates, we just can't keep up. And so they've worked with another group to help make sure that we can be clean, sterile, and ready for the next group to come in on the backside. So this is a very, very positive group for locals, for regional, and for international. And I commend you, Duncan, your staff, for doing such a great job. This is nothing but positive. This stock contractor is just a formality so that we have good stock for that event.
Correct.
And so, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract buying between Weber County and the, for the Icebreaker Rodeo with the Broken Heart Rodeo Company.
Very good. I have a motion.
I'm going to second that and, but I want to commend Commissioner Harvey for his efforts in.
in making sure that this type of venue not only started but remains in this county. I have an appreciation for rodeo, it goes a long way back in this county. We have a number of, of people in this county that were very well associated with rodeo over the past number of years. And personally, I think that's something that we need to, to maintain as, as we start to see more and more urbanization and probably a tendency to, to maybe have less influence in this direction. So I applaud your efforts in this and we encourage Duncan and his crew to, to make sure that we can continue this because this is very important for our heritage, not just the past heritage, but our recent past. So, that would be my second.
Thank you. You know, I'm excited about this as well and it kind of tickles me that it's turned into a qualifier.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting that we got that.
Very good, I'm gonna call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Next item up is a contract, approval of contract between Weber County and BB, and BB All-Stars for entertainment, oh, at the German, the Hoff, German Fest this year.
Yep, this is the last one. We, we had a little bit of a, a challenge getting the contract back from them, so it's, it's taken a little bit of time, but we're excited to bring them on as entertainment for this weekend. Doors open at 11, go till 10, but we're excited to, to bring these guys on as entertainers.
Tell us what days again?
Friday and Saturday. Doors open at 11.
Yeah, so this is good. This has been going on for how many years, Commissioner?
This is the 33rd annual.
33rd annual.
Yep.
How many years you been here for that, Duncan?
This will be my third.
Third year.
Yep. Excited for it.
33rd year. Man, this is great. Very good.
Chair, make a motion.
Okay, a motion by, I am, by representative, past representative. Commissioner Fror?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harvey. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
We'll see you there.
You bet, we will be there.
Mr. Chair, and then notice of full disclosure, I've got to make sure everybody's aware that I am part German, so.
Really?
That should be on the record, John, I do, I have been in this festival before.
Great. Is Fror German or is that?
It is, Swiss-German border, exactly.
Swiss-German?
Yeah.
That's why I like ski so much.
That's why, yeah, exactly. We like, we like the cold weather.
That's good. Alright, request for approval to ratify a contract between Weber County and Hill Air Force Base, Senator Field Security Force Squadron, Stephanie Ebert. I see you brought Sheriff with you today.
I did. I offered to let them come and speak, but they told me that it was my turn.
Very good.
So, I'm, we're here today to present a memorandum of understanding between Weber County and Hill Air Force Base. This is a renewal of an agreement that formalizes what our response should be in the event that they have any civilians trying to unlawfully enter the, the perimeter of Hill Air Force Base or any other perceived threats that they have, that the 75th Security Force Squadron will call on the sheriff's office to respond and conduct any investigations or make any arrests in incidents such as those. So I'm here today just to ask for your approval for this memorandum of understanding.
Very good. Any questions from the Commissioners?
I love that they're being proactive.
I do too. All I need's a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the contract or ratify the contract between Weber County and the Hill Air Force Base, 75th Security Forces Squadron.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Ebert, or, oh, the Harvey? A second from Fror. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
It's just because I'm standing right here, it's confusing.
Anyway, that's good. Alright, next item up is another request. It doesn't really, it says "who's between" but it doesn't tell us anything about it. Could you go ahead and tell us about this?
Absolutely, you bet. So, we have four new cadets that started up at Weber State's Corrections Academy this week. And our practice has been to have them sign a, a training agreement. We pay for them to attend the academy, we sponsor them through the academy, whether it's at Weber State or down at Post or Fred House Academy down in Sandy. And because we pay for those, those wages and benefits for the individuals while they're attending the academy, plus sponsor any costs that are associated with that academy, we ask that they sign an agreement with us for a couple of years so that they maintain employment with us because of the investment that we've had, that we put into them and send them to the academy to become certified law enforcement and corrections officers. So that's worked out well for us. We've done dozens of these and these are the, the four newest, again, they started this week, so.
Oh, that's good. It's hard to keep these kids here after they get trained because everybody's out poaching officers right now, I understand.
That's correct.
So this is a good agreement. Any questions from either of you two? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fror.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Harvey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. Alright, finally, we have a stall of fame. So, Quinn, why don't you come on up here and tell us about your stall of fame nominee? This is pretty good.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So we, we tried to get Lisa the Hall of Fame, but apparently stall of fame is the next best thing that Weber County does, so I'll let people figure out what that is. But, Lisa, I'm gonna make you come up here. So Lisa has been with the county for about 18 years. She started in the Treasurer's Office. She had a degree in IT and I'm not sure why she started in the Treasurer's Office, but eventually, an opening came in IT and she felt like her experience in the Treasurer's Office would be kind of a good mix and it's turned out to be so. Once in a while, when people aren't complaining about IT, we get compliments and, and two years in a row, I've received an email from John Bond specifically calling out Lisa for her performance through the tax season and the services that she provides. And from my end, Lisa's always got a smile. It might be a nervous reaction when she's super stressed to just smile, but she's always positive. Very, kind of what you seek out for a positive attitude to get the job done, always willing to help, and so I think this is really well deserved to give her this. Do you want to say?
Wonderful. We thank you very much for that. Lisa, it's because of people like you, the, the county has a good reputation. And I think we've got a great reputation and it's getting better and better all the time. We wanted to know that we appreciate your employment here, your contribution to the county and years of service. And with that comes the stall of fame parking for one whole month and we appreciate it. But more than important in the stall of fame is the recognition of it. And so, we're gonna stand up right now and give you a standing ovation, is that okay? There we go.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Can you give a little more than that?
I would just say I enjoy every person that I work with. It's, that is really what makes any job, I think, worthwhile is the individuals that you work with who genuinely care and really want to do a good job and that's what makes it such a good place to work.
Oh, we appreciate those words. Thank you very much, that's well spoken. Well, with that, as I look down here, I see one more motion that needs to be made.
Hold on.
Unless either of you two has something you want to say.
I do.
Oh yeah, that's right, Commissioners' comments, I forgot that.
If I may.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. Is that your radio voice?
Yeah, that's my radio voice. Ah, Commissioner Harvey.
Recently, I would like this body that are, that are here today to know how great it is to work with the two, Commissioner Fror and Commissioner Jenkins. Recently, we had the privilege of, of working together in an open meeting to discuss portfolio assignments. And I am grateful for how that went. While we have opportunities to not necessarily agree on everything, we were able to settle and settle with a good feeling at the conclusion of the, of the meeting and I'm really grateful for that. Commissioner Fror contributed to that and I appreciate that very much, Gage. To you, Commissioner Jenkins, Sean, or Mr. Wilkinson, Mr. Ross, Mr. Hadley. Recently, I had a concerned citizen who usually has a lot to say. And we went for a drive in the whole south end of the area and while I was braced and ready for what was to come next, we'd stop and say, "Look here, look at how wide this is plowed. We've never had this like this in, in the 15, 20 years I've been here. Look at how good a job they've done here." And I, and I don't know if many of you can appreciate because some admittedly live in the banana belt of Weber County where it rarely snows, if it does, it's really heavy like this. But, Gage?
No.
See, we get not a lot of snow and these last couple of snows were heavy. They were really heavy. So for the plows to do the work they've done, especially considering the work they had to do with the avalanche, my compliments to, to you in that division for doing a great job and representing us very, very well. We love that, you're, 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 you're making sugar out of vinegar. And I use those words quite accurately and specifically, but I really appreciate that. So, those are my comments today. Chair Jenkins?
Well spoke. Thank you.
Commissioner Fror, anything you'd care to say?
Yeah, let me just, I'd like to echo the thoughts of Commissioner Harvey and know that the opening remarks here two weeks ago that I made, we talked about a couple of things, or I talked about a couple of things. The one was being able to agree at the same time without being disagreeable. I think we've proven that over the last two weeks, that we don't necessarily agree on every aspect, but we sit down and talk through it, which is very important as we look forward to where this county's going to be in the next four to 10 to 20 years. This is the start of something I think that is very productive for this county. The other point I wanted to bring up is I'm very impressed this morning with the recognition of two of our employees, as I've had the time the last two weeks to interact with a number of Weber County employees and referencing back to customer service, which is very important to me because I think we, again, owe it to the public to give the best customer service that we can. The customer out there, our public that pays our, pays our way, pays the taxes, deserves that. And so it's very refreshing to me to see the members of our staff, our employees come up and be recognized for their efforts to continue that because without their efforts, we can never provide the customer service that I think that the public deserves. So, again, I applaud our employees, I look forward over the next three years plus some to make sure that we bring that to fruition. I'm excited about the, the direction this county's headed in a number of different arenas and I look forward to being part of that team to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's good dealing with both of you gentlemen. I've enjoyed it myself, it's been a lot of fun and I look forward to four more great years. Alright, with that, I need one more motion. Commissioner Harvey?
I'd like to make the motion, Chair Jenkins, that we adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
We're adjourned. Thank you all for coming today, it's good seeing you.